Thirty. I want to call the meeting of February the sixth to order. Can we get a roll call?
All right, Mr. Gerard.
Present.
Mr. Frecter.
Present.
Mr. Geller. Mr. Lees. Mr. Proper.
Here.
Mr. Kara.
Here.
And Ms. Gort.
Present.
As we are historic property here, we have the obligation to open up the meeting to anybody that has any issues as pertaining to the historic preservation. Nobody here? Anybody online?
No.
Okay.
Need to do a minute approval.
Um, anybody have any comments about the corrections or otherwise about the minutes? I wasn't here, so I don't have an opinion. Everybody's good with the minutes. Okay, then we will say that the minutes were approved from one sixteen. And we'll move on to the consent calendar. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion at this time that we call up the Meserich Residence Siding Repair number PL twenty twenty-four dash zero 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 eight. Okay.
A second.
It's called up.
Roll call, please. The to vote what to call it.
All right, we'll do a roll call. Mr. Lees.
Yes.
Ms. Gort.
Yes.
Mr. Gerard.
Yes.
Mr. Frecter.
Yes.
Mr. Geller.
Yes.
Ms. Proper.
Yes.
And Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
This is the call appearing. I'll give a short presentation from staff. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Sarah Crump, Planner Three for the record. So we have before you tonight, the residence at two oh five East Washington Avenue, and they're applying for siding restoration and replacement. And this project is located on Washington Avenue, just behind the Twist Restaurant, and across from some of the Creative Arts District buildings. Let me just scroll down to the so you can see some photos. A little background on this project, it was a cultural resource survey was conducted for the project previously in the early two thousands, and it found this structure to be contributing and eligible for landmarking within the district. It was originally constructed approximately between nineteen oh nine and nineteen fourteen, according to historic Sanborn maps. And the structure has been under the same ownership since the late nineteen sixties. Originally, there was clapboard siding under the all facades and vertical siding under the rear exterior, but probably in the nineteen forties or fifties, this siding was covered with asphalt shingle siding and of the scalloped variety, and I did quite a bit of research on this material. The scalloped material probably was more popular in the nineteen fifties and applied at that time. Several modifications were made around the middle of the century, including in closing the front porch and creating closet about out of that area. And it's possible that some of the rear of the structure was a former barn and possible addition. It's not anticipated in the survey that was conducted, but just because of the difference of siding, staff believes that perhaps this was a separate structure at one point. Recently, the applicant did come forward and they applied for a new roof on the structure. Their original roof was failing. This has been completed, and that permit was approved in December. During that process, they decided that they wanted to go forward with re-siding, and their original proposal was to remove the asphalt shingles and replace with fiber cement board in a dimension and paint, paint structure with overlap of four inches that would be compliant with the Handbook of Design standards. But when the roofing, re-roof was completed, some of the shingles were removed, and this exposed the new, the original historic clapboard siding underneath. And, uh, you know, the project changed dramatically, I think, from a little bit from what the owner had anticipated. So we're here tonight to discuss how that restoration should go. Design standards in the handbook clearly define how we cannot allow for the historic fabric to be covered up. It, Design Standards twenty-three and twenty-five, both, both articulate how these character-defining features need to be restored and repaired when it's feasible through splicing and restoration techniques instead of replacement with new materials. The handbook also speaks directly to the removal of asphalt siding, stating that that's not a significant exterior material for our period of significance in the district, and that those materials should be removed and the original siding should be restored. It's staff's recommendation that for this project, the historic siding that exists on the front and sides that can be salvaged, that those be restored and spliced and new material milled to match and fit where that can't be restored. And that if any of a total facade was a total loss, that in that case, they could choose to replace the, any completely lost material with fiber cement board in a dimension that matches the historic siding, and then it would all be painted to match. So tonight, we have the question for the Commission about whether the Planning Commission agrees with staff's approach and would approve the project with our recommended findings and added conditions. And I would do want to state that we really commend the owner for coming forward with this improvement project, and staff recognizes that this is a more challenging project than you originally anticipated, but we do appreciate your effort for improving the house and restoring its historic character. So I'm happy to take questions on the report or any factual questions that the Commission may have at this time. Thank you.
Alan, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I think one, Sarah, you could answer. Thanks for, uh, the report for setting up the site visit. What's the specification for matching? Is that in terms of dimensions, texture, both?
Dimensions and the tech, the handbook states that texture should be that which is used historically, but it doesn't say what that texture was. So we would want to see any new material added, match in texture, dimension, color.
Is there off-the-shelf materials that's close enough to meet that spec? This is a small project.
Do you mean natural wood or fiber cement?
Like if they were to do a whole facade of fiber cement, is there anything close enough that's off the shelf?
It's my understanding that they can obtain four-inch lap fiber cement siding.
Yeah.
And it would have a texture similar to natural wood.
Okay.
This cedar mill texture.
Got it, okay. And then, how much does, so I'm jumping ahead here, so I think the question that came up during the site visit, so I guess we can ask it now. So how much does current building code overrule historical code? So historically, we're allowed to have wood right down to the ground, but we don't want to have wood right down to the ground now with current building code, so how much are we allow, are we allowed to put something that's better to withstand the elements down near the ground?
I'm not an expert in building codes, but um, the historic does override in this case, I think. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mark or Chris, but this handbook for historic structures can dictate that the siding be maintained to the ground.
Yeah, I don't think, believe there's anything in the building code that requires.
So you can have, but, but down.
Unless someone knows something.
Surface, okay.
Yeah, I think like on a, like on a new construction, usually they'll opt to put a more durable material, whether it be rock or metal or something like that, but in the case where it's existing, and if the siding's in good condition, I think we'd want that to be maintained.
Got it, okay. That's it.
I have a question about the hardy board. I'm not, what's the benefit of using that over regular wood other than the water issue for the lower part?
It is a more durable product. It's made, we had lengthy discussions last year about the makeup of hardy board material and its allowance in the town, but it's a wood fiber product, and it's filled with cement and fly ash from coal. And this makes a really structurally a compound and material that's pretty, has a lot of structural integrity. It's hard to chip. It's weather resistant. It's more fireproof. It's definitely a superior product as far as durability to natural wood. Depending on, other Commissioners may have a different opinion than me, but Commissioners may have a different opinion than me. But as far as durability, it is considered to be more durable than natural wood.
So the cost is similar to wood or?
Um, less, but it is a very heavy product, so sometimes the installation cost can be more than installing natural wood.
Thank you, and I'd first like to thank, I think, the owners who are here for doing the right thing and stepping up here with this project. It's something that we, as a certified local government and historic preservation, is really important to us, I think. I don't really have any questions other than, and I did a side trip this weekend because I knew I was going to be in court today. Has the planning department formed any opinions as to whether any of the facades are totally unrestorable?
I think that's something.
Well, should I say it's staff's opinion?
Staff's opinion.
So staff's opinion is that the front and side that are currently exposed that have the shingles have been removed, it's very evident that a majority of those can be restored. On the rear, I think some more investigation would need to occur, and at the pre-construction meeting, the rear is south-facing. It seems to have a lot more sun and weather exposure than the other facades, and the shingles haven't been removed yet from that side. But what, you know, we did pull back some on the south facade, and you can kind of feel the sponginess of the natural wood that's there underneath. So it's possible that the rear would, would not be able to be salvaged, but to be determined through a pre-construction meeting.
And is it the planning department's feeling that rather than treat this like a preliminary hearing on an application, while we find out more about what is going to be behind the the materials, you, you want to just have conditions put in that say, if you find this, then you can do that? Is that my understanding?
And that's somewhat how their proposed conditions do read, you know, they outline that if certain areas aren't salvageable, then, then you could replace with the new material. So yes, that's what we're asking, if, if, because this is a lower-level classification of permit, it would, you know, be decided here and go forward with the agreed-upon conditions.
Yeah, Steve, I think, we think if, if we get the direction from Commission, you look at what we put in conditions in terms of, you know, the overall direction on where we should go with this, we feel we can make the that, that determination in the field along with bringing the guys from the Building Division along to carry that out.
And my last question is, was there any conversation or maybe should there be a conversation about actually landmarking this building? And whether the owners might be eligible for tax credits to assist them in financing the restoration?
Um, that's certainly up to the applicant. I know that they were considering a future renovation in addition possibly, so they may want to landmark at that time later on, but that's something that they could consider.
All right, thank you.
Ethan. I don't have any specific questions. I, well, I have one comment, talking about the, talking about the issue with water damage on the lower parts. Can you install gutters, which would help? There's no issue with that in this historic, right?
So, no, that's possible.
Other than that, I'll have any, any questions.
Mike.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, Sarah. It was a helpful presentation and a valuable site tour, and thank you, Maureen and Amy, for being here. We want to work with you to find a good solution for this, and the the town cares deeply about the place, and I know you do too. But we want to better understand why the building is in the condition it is, so I just have a few small questions for Sarah. And one is that I know that over time, historic structures settle, and the surrounding grade raises through thatch or when deposited soil. And so was there any consideration to fixing the drainage that drains into the house?
That's not part of this proposal at this time.
Okay. But typically, we wouldn't replace materials without fixing the drainage that's the cause of the rot.
I'll let the applicant speak more to that. They may have a plan for improving drainage near the foundation when they add additional siding. So I don't want to speak for them, because maybe they've contemplated that, and it's just not in the proposal.
Okay, that helps. Thank you. And then, just a general discussion on the estimate of the siding age and the durability of siding. Do we know how old that existing siding is?
The clapboard or the?
Clapboard.
We don't, but it could be original. I mean, it could have been something that was, you know, redone in the twenties, or we know that the structure was nineteen oh nine to nineteen fourteen, somewhere in there, according to Sanborn maps for original construction. So it's possible that it could be original to the house.
I, I agree, and, you know, hundred-year-old-plus siding that's kept dry and occasionally painted or stained really does last well. I could tell that, I'm pretty sure that that's cedar siding, which is, uh,
You're right.
Yeah. Sorry, which is more rot-resistant than most woods. So I think that you have great siding there. And then, just a small question on hardy board. If you cut it or saw it or drill into it, do you know if it has the ability to absorb water and delaminate or expand?
Some of the earlier versions of hardy board had those expansion with moisture problems. I think they've really perfected the product in, and made it less, more moisture-resistant than previous. Hardy board is something that we do allow on historic structures because of its durability. And it was one of, it's the only like non-natural composite material that we do allow in the town.
That's very helpful. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks very much, Sarah. I thought this report was really very helpful, and I appreciated being able to walk around the building and hear from the owners about the history and what you've tried to do over the years. I was wondering if staff determines, for example, that the south facade with the barn wood is not salvageable at all, would staff require that the hardy board be installed vertically in that place, or, or could they do it horizontally?
No, I think we, if they were going to do the four-inch hardy on the rear of the structure, we would want it to be horizontal to match.
The rest.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, on the other sides where a lot of it seems to be pretty intact, but there's clearly some damage particularly along the bottom of the walls. So would they be able to put hardy board down there, and would that be more resistant to the weather?
I think that's a question for the Commission.
I see.
To discuss.
Okay.
If that would be allowed per the handbook.
Okay. That's all I had.
Sarah, you mentioned in your presentation that there had been a survey done and an assessment of this building concerning landmark. Can you clear that up a little bit? Is it landmark? Is it simply suitable for landmarking? Okay.
Eligible for local landmark, and it's contributing to our historic district.
In, in the opinion of that survey?
Correct.
Which means we have to address it as an historic structure. There's no wiggle in that.
I, I understand. I've got some opinions about that.
Okay.
Mike, you, you raised a question about the hardy. The hardy boards, you can cut it, you can drill it. It doesn't absorb water at all. The one thing that's important, usually it's, it's blind fastened with pneumatic nails with heads. The one thing that's important to do is behind every joint, you need to flash it so that the water doesn't enter the joint and then penetrate the building below. And that is whether you use a building paper or not, you still have to flash it, and that's really the only issue about weathering that, that hardy has. Otherwise, it's just, it's just durable. It's Class A fire rating, you know, it's a, it's a good material in this particular situation. Couple of things come to mind. We, we, in my mind, I think we again have the conflict that we occasionally do in looking at projects where.
Further questions? Further questions now? I have no further questions.
I do think the applicant has a presentation or a proposal for what they would like to.
Sarah, before we go that, one other question came to mind after Susan's questions.
Okay.
Isn't it true that if a sidewall is not sort of totally unreparable, you have to match the existing wood with new existing wood similar to, you couldn't use the hardy board, could you?
According to the Secretary Standards, you should not, which is what our design code is based.
That's what your report said.
Our handbook recommends that you splice and match with natural wood material to match. That's why our recommendation is only if the total facade is not repairable, that the hardy board could be used.
Maybe I just misunderstood Susan's question and your answer, but I thought Susan asked if there were parts that were not.
And I said that was something the Planning Commission should discuss.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. That building on French Street, next to the French Street parking lot there, across from the Catholic Church, remember our collapse? When, when they, there was some material that was lost there, we required them to maintain all the historic fabric that they could, and then splice in material. Some of it was historic that they got from other sites or things that matched very closely as Sarah described earlier.
Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? Alan?
Well, if the applicant wants to present.
Any of you would like to get up and just?
If you just want to summarize your proposal for restoration, Eduardo, or I have the pages that you sent me that explain what you were proposing to do. Sure.
Come on up to the microphone right here at the. Don't mind.
Okay, um, this project just started, can you hear me then? This project just started with a new roof. As, because we had the workers there that were doing the roof, we thought it might be really nice to get the siding fixed. We were familiar with the hardy board siding because we've seen that done in Denver quite a bit, and it lasts, seems to last forever. And you don't have any of the problems with paint, et cetera, and it looks very similar to my view. I may not have, you know, the expert view that some of you might, but so we priced it all out and decided it was really worth it to do it. When we found out that we may be required to maintain, you know, to maintain what we already have, we, we spoke with several people that we've used to do projects before, and they all agreed that the hardy boy, hardy board was the, the material that should be used. And that, you know, if we needed to maintain the original boards on the front of the house, at least, you know, on the sides where people really can't see that as much, maybe we could do the concrete board there, and on the front of the house, fix the bottom so that it wouldn't be a maintenance problem. But we just aren't equipped to do the kind of maintenance that has been required in the past. So that's kind of where we are. We would like to do something that lasts forever, so. I think Eduardo would tell you, almost anything can be done if you want to spend enough money to do it, and if you want to do the maintenance.
Steve, there, you may have questions. There is no microphone on because I'm having trouble hearing.
Oh, let me just make sure that.
If you don't mind just speaking directly into the mic, thanks.
Okay.
Alan, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, so have you, have you priced out what it would cost or, or, yeah, in terms of using or patching the, for those facades where you would have to keep the existing wood siding, have you priced that out yet? Is it?
No, I have, I have no idea. I have no idea what that might be. You know, I, I, you can patch. I think you have to patch any boards with original wood, you know, original boards. But on the bottom, I don't see why you couldn't use concrete board. You know, if it, if you can do the four inch and you match the color, I don't know why you would want to put wood there.
So I, I guess, I, I just want to know what you're asking, what you would like us to make a decision on. So would you, are you asking us to be able to use, to approve you using hardy board everywhere? Or where you do have the original siding in restorable condition, you want to use hardy board at the, at the base, or?
My personal opinion is that I would rather have the hardy board throughout the whole house.
Okay.
I understand that that is not allowed.
Okay.
And I, I hate to spend a lot of money creating the same problem that I have already.
And then in light of what we have in terms of the historical standards, so your first ask is, I just want to get, so we can get to.
I guess I would like to understand why the wood, you know, I, I understand that some, like the how the business just below us has board, older boards that have been painted and you can see that they look old, they're damaged and, you know, is that the look that you're looking for? Because I thought that the hardy board looked very, very similar and I don't understand why the wood is required. I mean, there must be a difference in look that I don't see.
So just part of our, a lot of times we cover this in comments, so we're like judges. So it's the town council and the town has, sets these guidelines.
Right.
And so it's our, our responsibility to see that we satisfy the guidelines.
Sure.
And so we have, you know, some leeway and things that we, you know, can do. So that's why I'm trying to get to what your request is. So I, I, I don't want to put words in the mouth, but you're, you, it sounds like you also have a concern about having the wood coming all the way down. If you have to keep the wood.
Yes.
You don't want to have that, okay?
Yeah, I mean, if I knew that we had to replace everything with wood and it had to go to the bottom, I would not ever have submitted the, the request. Because I don't know that I can afford to do that and maintain that going forward. But I know that rules do change. Amy had asked years ago if we could put gutters on the house and she was told, no, we could not have gutters because it was not historical. So it sounds like now things have changed and that was one of the things that we were going to ask here is if we could do gutters because that can certainly help. But I believe, I was told that when some work was done on the house just up the hill from ours, that's when a lot of water started dumping into our yard.
And then have you done, I made this question for Eduardo, but have you done in your initial investigations where you have the vertical planks, is, what's the condition of the wood at the bottom of those vertical planks?
From what we know, it's.
Spongy, okay. But the upper parts are, are. Okay. Okay. All right, that's all I've got.
And the other question is, you know, when you've got, when you have these vertical boards, if the whole bottom is rotted, then do you require that the whole board be replaced or can they be cut off and, like, and, and put some other? I mean, our preference would be to just, you know, put on the horizontal boards, which I think look far more attractive. We drove around the town earlier this afternoon and it seemed like the places that had those vertical boards, wide vertical boards and there's a gap between all those boards. So it looks like a lot of places have put strips in between them and they seem to be garages or sheds. They don't seem to be part of a house.
That's all the questions I have, thank you. Don't go anywhere, no, they.
I'm up, are we going in order? Ah, okay, so I actually really love the vertical boards on the back and I think those are very historic to the house because maybe originally that was like some kind of shed that was converted into a small house. So I encourage you to kind of try to look at it maybe in a different angle, more of a historical, like this is, this is brick, you know, somebody added this on to make a house to live in and it's, to me, it's, you know, we always preserve big mansions and stuff like that, but not the common folk kind of place. And I think this is got a really cool story that you've kind of discovered. So I actually really like the vertical and I think I encourage you to try to maintain it because I think that adds value to the uniqueness of that amazing property you have, so.
So just clarification, this is questions of the applicant.
Okay, so my question is, do you think you, have you looked at it that way? Or is that something just new in your?
We discussed it as we were driving around town.
Yeah.
I think part of my problem with it is the gaps between the boards.
Sure.
And I had a house in Denver that had that similar kind of, you know, in the seventies, they were building houses like that and they were all tri-levels, it seemed like, and I thought they were really not very attractive. Something.
I'd just like to add to that, where you put the one bias between the two boards, it can, you'll have to have a caulk line after you paint over it. If that is not maintained, it can be an opening for rodents to get in under the foundation of the house and creep in. And a lot of times that caulking can deteriorate every year and it can become a continued maintenance issue where a lap siding protects more and keeps from as much exposure, in my opinion.
Okay. Have you considered like putting, what do you call it, where you have the piece of wood over it, battening, is that something that could be feasibly done to cover those holes and maintain the look?
That's what I'm talking about.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. As opposed to just filling it with some kind of?
Yeah, and then some of the spots where the one exposed spot on the south side, I mean, that was wider than a one inch opening. So, you know.
Something would have to be done to creatively fulfill that. All right, that's all my questions.
I'm kind of one for keeping the record straight and we don't have either of your names or addresses in the record yet, so could you do that for us?
Amy Messrich, 9182 New Village, Colorado, 8011.
Maureen Messrich, I want you on my address, 5575 South Newport Street, Greenwood Village, Colorado.
Thanks. Otherwise, when somebody looks back at this, they never know who was talking to us. Sarah mentioned that, in response to at least one of my questions and somebody else's, that you maybe had other plans to do an addition or something to this home?
Sarah gave us some information that the property would be made larger and.
If you can speak into the microphone, it would really be helpful to us because we're trying to hear you.
Sarah gave me information that the house could be expanded and there, if you were going to do small additions, there could be like a 200 foot, square foot addition or a 400 square foot, depending upon whether you were doing what was required for, to be a historical. If it was historical, it could be 400 plus square feet, otherwise 200. And.
We discussed the landmarking process and how you could get like a density bonus for underneath, yeah.
And you could, you could make it 1,600 square feet if you put a basement under it, et cetera. And I just thought, well, 200 square feet would be nice. And that was kind of, that's, then when this became a bigger project than what I thought it was going to be, I thought, well, maybe we should have said, let's add 200 square feet, but I guess that's for another time.
Thank you, that's all I have for questions. No questions, thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Chair. So following up on your concern about the rot and the siding, have you looked behind that siding, especially on the backside, the uphill side where it drains into it? And do you know, is the two by four framing behind that sound or has that too suffered from rot?
Now, are we talking on the, the back side that may have been the barn?
Side appears to be, have more, a lot more rot than the front side?
Yes, and it's my understanding that that was an older part of the house, that the front was added on later.
Makes sense.
And that the front was maybe built as a house where the back wasn't originally.
Yeah, they often cobble together structures or, but do you know the condition of the two by framing be, behind the siding, especially in the back? It was pointed out to us, I'll try and phrase this as a question, but you showed me underneath the window where it was rotted, but that was the one by sheathing. Do you know the condition of the two by framing behind that? You don't? It wouldn't be hard to find out. It wouldn't, it would be likely that if the sheathing is rotted, the framing behind it has issues too. So you don't want to put good siding on, whether it's wood or hardy plank. You, I'm sure you don't want to put good siding on bad framing. So I'm trying to help you understand the scale of the, the problems there. And then when you mentioned that when they did the work next door to the east of you, you noticed more drainage issues, could you speak to that a bit?
I can't say that I noticed it. I was told that there was a lot more water being dumped on our property.
Okay.
That was a contractor probably some time ago.
That's not unusual in construction. You change one site and it affects the drainage to an adjacent site, so. And then are you considering, it, it's one thing to replace some siding, but the source of the problem isn't the siding, the source of the problem is the drainage. Are you considering fixing the drainage?
We didn't, no. I mean, we have, you know, we have done repairs to it before, but at this point, it was really just an extension of getting the roof fixed.
Yeah, I understand. And then you and Alan had a, you asked, you said you'd like to understand why and the short answer is authenticity and integrity of the historic building. And Ellen mentioned, we're bound by the state to protect the buildings in the historic district and we're trying to work with you for a suitable solution on that.
Sure. And I, I guess, you know, my thought was that it would look very much like the original, but some, you must see a difference.
The, the experts see it differently. And I, I could refer you to, through Sarah, we can refer you to some information on that, the preservation.
And, you know, and we were fine with doing the front, you know, when it gets to be the whole house, then it, it becomes a bigger problem, I think, more than what I've been able to contemplate before.
Is it your perception that hardy board would be cheaper than similar wood siding?
I believe it's more expensive, quite a bit more expensive, the original, you know. I don't know what is involved in having the, what do they call the wood? Milled wood? Yeah, I wasn't familiar with what that was and if I, Eduardo said it, you are able to purchase it. It's not something you have to actually have milled?
I think that's true. You'd have to order it, but it should be readily available.
Yeah.
It has been for.
Yeah, I mean, for me, I think the maintenance issue is the, is the really big thing and, you know, and maybe maintaining the boards that are above.
Sure.
Maybe a lot easier than the ones that are below. And it's not just a matter of drainage, it's a matter of the snow sitting there. You know, it goes against, against the building and how, how do you maintain that? You know, do you put concrete, you know, all the way around your building or, you know, what do you do to, to get that so it can be shoveled off or, you know, for, for those of us who don't live there?
Yeah. That goes back to the discussion about, would you fix the drainage because that's the source of your problem? And we note that the siding that is allowed to dry out is 100 years old and is still sound. So oftentimes in buildings, when you have rot issues, it's a, it's part of a puzzle, it's not just a single thing. And you might be disappointed if for some reason you were allowed to put hardy plank on there or hardy board and you didn't fix the other things, I, I think you'd have the same problem in, in a handful of years.
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I'm not saying that we wouldn't fix them. I think it would be normal for you to take a look at what was involved in that before you put the siding on.
Right.
But it's not something that I have contemplated yet.
Understood. And then a small comment, normally in this process, we're happy to work with you and we care about that building, but normally in this process, we would be brought a set of drawings so we could be more specific and so you would have a little better understanding. We all respect how this project evolved and we want to work with you on solutions, but it makes it a little harder for us to give you good answers, but we'll figure it out. So, no further questions, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Susan, do you have questions for the applicant?
No, I think Mike covered some of the issues I was going to raise.
Thank you, Maureen.
I feel, I think the applicant's not done. Did you want to say something else?
No.
Sorry. Or, sorry, Mark, did you want to question Maureen? I'm sorry.
I had a few questions. So, so if I understand what you're asking for, the responses that you've had to Alan and a few other people, you're really looking for this panel to approve the use of the hardy board to resolve the problems that you know about at this time. And you've admitted that there may be other problems to the structure that Mike has alluded to that you're not aware of.
Correct.
Am I correct?
Correct.
I have no further questions of the applicant. Name and address.
My name is Eduardo Vazquez and my address is 1049 Laredo Street in Aurora, 80011. I'm a little nervous, I never.
It's okay.
We have a siding permit to, we propose to tear off the existing siding all the way down to, to the plywood, but I wasn't sure if it was going to be plywood or not. So now it's no plywood. But on my proposal, on my, what I submit, I put there that I was gonna wrap the house with plywood, new plywood and fix any rotted studs or any, anything behind the siding. We're gonna replace it with wood treated, similar to the existing. And then on the bottom of the house, we're gonna, we're going to put two feet of sheet metal all the way around to prevent from mice going inside the house because they like to live in there, so. We like to put some, two feet of sheet metal all the way around and then five feet of And then, five feet of isowater shield to pre- to really waterproof the structure. And then, our hardy body, which is a really good product for, for the snow and lasts longer than regular wood. That's my original plan. So now, the way that I see it, we can salvage the front of the house and the left, only like three quarters right on the left side, where we have the forty inch siding overlap exposed. And then, the back, I don't think we can save the vertical plank, the one by eight, because it's rotted on the bottom and rotted on the top. So now, they have a blow insulation between the stats. As you can see on those grouts, the insulation is falling out. Now, we have to, in order to get a straight surface for us to do the hardy body, we, we need to remove that. We need to remove those one by eights, the vertical. Check the stats, make sure nothing is rotted. And replace everything that, you know, that is rotted and then put new plywood, sheet metal, isowater, and the hardy board with paint. I don't know if you guys have a better solution than that? The other option too is we can try to salvage those vertical boards, the one by eights, because there are damage on the top and damage on the bottom. And we can try to save the middle. And then, towards the bottom, we can do like three or four feet of the hardy body. And then, from there up, do those boards to try to reuse the siding.
So, we're going to ask just a few questions. That helps us understand what you're thinking. And it sounds like you have ideas for a more complete rehab of the exterior. None of that's in drawings, is that correct?
No.
Okay. It makes us nervous because of the previously noted sort of, when you have moisture issues in a building, they're often more complicated. But have you taken any of the interior siding off to see the condition of the walls?
No. It's, it's something that we discovered today.
Oh, today?
And yesterday.
Okay. Okay. Usually, in a project like this, you do some very small select investigation where you cut a one foot hole in a wall in a few places and try and understand what your problems are and what the conditions are. A lot of what you described really can't be done on, under the historic preservation design guidelines or design code. And it may not solve your problems. So, have you, Maureen, have you thought about looking at this building from the inside?
We can. We can.
Yes. And, and you would rather know upfront than tear off all that siding and have that building exposed to the elements and realize you have larger problems?
Well, I think you figured that out really quick. Right? I mean, when...
What does that mean?
Well, once you tear off a board or two, you're, you find out pretty quick if everything under it is rotted or not. We're not anticipating, I mean, the house is pretty nice from, in the inside. And so, you know, I'm, I'm not thinking that we have any major problems there. If there were any major problems, they would take care of it.
It would be advisable to have a better understanding of what the issues are and what the condition of the two by framing is. And we could frankly give you better answers and a better review and...
I guess this, you know, this is, this is the first time that I've come up here to look at it.
Understood.
And in the meet, you know, and we came because this meeting was being called. But I don't, I don't see that, I guess, I'm not anticipating that there's going to be a big problem there because the boards on the middle are fine. I think it's more the boards that are near the roof, you know, where there's been water dripping and at the base. And so, my experi- in my experience, I haven't run into having a major problem like that.
I, I just wanted to clarify, I mean, what Mr. Gillar is doing is just providing a suggestion for you. You, you could replace your siding and not do that in that degree. We do not regulate that aspect.
Yeah.
Thank you for the questions. Any other?
You know, I, I think I have a lot of confidence in these guys for doing the right thing. You know, it's, they're not strangers.
I would say that the facial work they did was very substandard. It is because it's a land, it's a it's an eligible structure in an historic district. And she's speaking to the workmanship.
And I'm what?
You, you spoke to their workmanship and I don't see it that way. But, no further questions.
Rest of the panel, Alan, do you have any questions?
No.
Mike? Steve? Ethan? No questions. Susan?
The new gutter, new gutter system will help a lot.
But I have a question. Have, have you had any experience, professional experience, doing the restoration of a project that is in this bad of completeness?
Yes, but not landmark. Like, this is different. This is like a piece of gold, the way that we have to treat it.
Very different.
Yeah, it's very different. And then, speaking about the facial installation, the building is all tilted, you know, it's, so in order for us to do a fine cuts and stuff, once, we're not aware that she wants to do the siding. Otherwise, we could have done a better, you know, fixing here and there, the structure a little bit.
So it sounds to me like previously, when you undertook this project, you were not aware of the scrutiny that the town would have on what you're proposing to do. But as of today, you do have a better understanding of that?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes.
I have no further questions. So, do we open this up to discussion?
Public comment and questions?
Do we want to do this? Questions?
Public comment, Mark?
Yeah, sorry. Do we have anybody online who wants to make a public comment?
There are quite a few people online. So can you read the instructions for online if you, if you wish to talk?
Unfortunately, I don't have a script with me tonight, so I'm stumbling here a little bit.
I think it's star, star nine to talk. If you're in line and you wish to talk during the public comment period, please press star nine. Or raise your hand and I can allow you to talk.
And then, press star six to unmute.
Thanks, Alan. No one is raising their hand online.
So we have observers, but nobody would like to comment?
One last call, if you would like to comment online, please raise your hand. I don't see any hands, thanks.
All right, I think we can move on.
Yeah.
So at this point, we'll open it to comment from the commissioners? Is that how you want to handle this one? Alan?
I think I, I shared my comment. I'll just reiterate my comment. So we, you know, we as, we have municipal and state mandated historical standards that we have to maintain. And I appreciate this is a surprise to you about based upon what you discovered and what you've learned through this process. But we, there's, we, there's limited leeway that we have to provide you in terms of how you can, how you are going to have to proceed to restore this building or to, to handle the siding. So we, we, I think at this point, I think what we'd need you to do is come to us with a, we, to provide any kind of approval, we'd have to have some, as, as Commissioner Gillar stated, we'd need you to give, we have to look at something very specific to approve it in terms of what is being restored and what new materials are being added in on each facade.
I have nothing.
I think there are a lot more questions than there are answers for this project. And I certainly appreciate that you were surprised with what you found out and probably even more surprised with what the standards for repairing and maintaining historic structures are. I think you have a lot of decisions to make. I asked the question about treating this like a preliminary hearing rather than a final hearing. And that's not because I distrust the planning department's ability to manage this building permit. But I, I think you have to think about a lot of things. You know, we might be looking at this project as we have with many others. How are you stabilizing the foundation? Is that part of the problem? How are you correcting the drainage? As my colleague, Mr. Gillar, has clearly pointed out, if you don't fix that, you're going to be back right where you were when we started. And that, as I read the design guidelines for this project, you will not be able to put hardy board or metal siding or anything else next to the ground to create that barrier and then go into the historic fabric above that. It's, it's replace historic fabric with historic fabric or similar wood product that matches as best it can be made to match. I'm wondering if you, if you want to put on this addition and would this be the time to do it? In for a penny, in for a pound, do, do it right while you're doing it. Do you want to landmark this project? Could you get tax credits that would assist you financially in making this work? There are just lots of questions I have here. And I feel really bad for you in having to be in the hot seat defending what you kind of thought was, hey, this is great, we'll just put hardy board on our house and life goes on and it's all great inside. But I don't think we're there. So, I know that I can't give you what you want. And I heard that question asked, what do you want us to do? And I can't go for that because it's, it's not consistent with the design guidelines and our responsibility with the historic preservation. I'd really like to continue this conversation and come back with some other ideas and talk about it. I don't think that's what the planning department is asking for us today. But I don't think you're ready to make this step yet. That's my comment. Thank you, Steve. Ethan?
Yeah. So I, I, I understand and have sympathy for the applicant's discovery of, of the problems with the siding. He started out as a, just simply replacing the roof and discovered all these problems with the siding and and that it was all governed by this, the historic guidelines. That said, I think the questions before this commission is pretty straightforward. And I think that the planning staff has pretty much outlined quite accurately what needs to be done here. I don't see any, I, I disagree with some of my other commissioners that there's other questions to, to me. The questions about the, the, the structure, the questions about the drainage, yes, those are all contributing problems, but those are questions more for the building department. Questions before us here is specific to the siding. And it's, design standard thirty-five or twenty-three and twenty-five are very specific about what you can and cannot do. I won't go through it because it's written here. And I think that there's no leeway for this commission to, to, to give you any, any other avenues than to what is specifically written in this report. So I would, I would say unfortunately, that's where you're going to go.
Thank you Chair. Thank you Amy and Maureen for bringing this to us. We do want to find a solution with you and we understand that you may not agree with everything that we've said tonight. But I think you need a preservation architect to guide your work. It's much cheaper to scope and find those problems in advance than midstreaming construction. And it's really, very common for these kinds of rehab projects to grow in scope as you discover additional problems. Ethan's absolutely correct. The only question you, you truly asked us to answer is the hardy plank. And according to the design standards, we can approve hardy plank in the way you're proposing to use it. That's all I have. Thank you Chair.
Susan?
Yeah, I mean, when I read this report, I have to admit, my heart went out to you. I, I think that the issues that this project presents are, I'm sure, much more than you thought you were getting into. And I'm, I'm sorry. But I, I do think that we have limited authority to proceed along the lines that you're suggesting. You know, the, the rules are pretty clear. And I think that's where we are. I think that Mike has offered some good suggestions if you want to go that route. But I do think that in terms of what you've presented to us, the design standards are clear. And absent a facade that's entirely unusable, you know, that can't be reclaimed at all, I think that you're in the situation of having to replace it with natural material that matches what is already there. I understand all the concerns that you've raised, but I don't know that we have the leeway to do other than what's, what's here. So I think that's kind of where we are.
Thank you Susan.
Mark, I'd like to add, I, I meant to also...
Mark, I'd like to add, I um I meant to also add that this project started out as a repair project for you. It is no longer a repair project. It is a restoration project. And so you might want to seriously consider finding a restoration professional to complete your project.
Um I want to echo the comments of um most of the commissioners. I don't think we're in a position due to the design handbook to be able to say you can put your siding on. And I truly empathize with where you are because you started to do a good thing to make this structure look more appropriate. And you ended up with really a mess and I don't think you begin to understand any of you. Any of the four of you begin to understand how big of a problem you're uncovering here. And the more you uncover it, the more you're gonna find. Which is why the gentlemen to our left are both suggesting that you get a design professional that has some experience in restoration because that's kind of where you are. And financially, um you know, I I empathize with you because you have a valuable piece of property there, but it's limited in its value by the structure that's there. So you're in the predicament where you probably cannot afford, nor would it be wise of you to throw more money into a situation that you can't recover. So I would urge you to um look carefully at what what you have here. And again, you know, I I I empathize with your position and I'm sorry about that. So Sarah, at this point, do you want to poll the panel about our opinions about uh denying the the siding request? Because the siding request is really paramount to this application, is it not?
Well, I think it would be, you would vote on whether you approve the application with staff's recommended conditions and not any additional con- condition that would allow for a different uh deviation from the handbook, so. Correct.
Chairman, I would like to make a motion then. I move that the planning commission approve the Meserich Residence Siding Repair Application Number PL dash twenty twenty-four dash zero zero eight with the additional terms and conditions set forth in the planning department report, which include new paragraphs nine, ten, eleven, and twenty-three as set forth in the report with a passing score of zero points and upon the attached findings and conditions as amended. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Ethan spoke before I saw Susan's hand, so second by Ethan Gara. Can we take a vote, Chris?
Absolutely. Mr. Giller?
No.
Ms. Proper?
Yes.
Mr. Gara?
Yes.
Mr. Lees?
Um no.
Ms. Gort?
No.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Fractor?
Yes.
Alright, so the motion carries four three.
Thank you.
So maybe just a little clarification then. So what we just did, because it's a little confusing how we do this. Essentially, what we uh um the planning commission has just confirmed is that the staff report and the conditions that we have apply. So it would be, you're gonna have to replace it with historic material in those areas, splice in to um where you need to, that type of thing. So that's what's approved. If that's something you can't go forward with, you can always come back and propose something else if 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 it's if it would meet muster here, but you could kind of have a sense of where we're coming from now from the town staff. And I just have to say, we we're really concerned about precedent throughout the historic district. So historic fabric is important for us to preserve and that's why we we try to do it where we can.
Okay. Other matters?
I guess I'll start too. If you have like additional questions, you can follow up with Sarah um afterwards or or any of our staff members as well as Sarah.
And thank you for your time being here and and uh that you've invested in this. We really do appreciate it.
Thank you. You guys don't need to, you you're done. Yeah, thank you. Hey, Town Council Summary from January twenty-third. Had a presentation from High Country Conservation regarding they're working on a climate equity plan. And so it's as they're looking at, you know, the climate action plan and ways to you know, address that and you know, because all the towns in the county and the county have all adopted that several years ago to make sure that um looked at. It's a big issue in a lot of communities where um you know, the some of the disadvantaged populations are are impacted disproportionately by um you know, you look down in Denver at some of the communities like near the Commerce City, you know, refineries and stuff like that, air quality, all kinds of other issues. So as we move forward, even on new initiatives related to climate action to make sure that there's not implications from those decisions that somehow um you know, affect um some of those populations um disproportionately. So anyway, um it's
Mark, that would take into consideration the economic effects of deciding natural gas, electric, or some other um energy that we don't know about at this point.
Yeah, that's a really good question, Mark. I think that is part of the discussion in terms of if there's impacts in terms of is is change into renewables gonna cost more for, you know, I'll just say like some neighborhood like Dillon Valley or something like that, you know? And so um so anyway, um so yeah, I think those things need to be considered and that's kind of the discussion.
How would the town council propose that that be evaluated? Would they hire consultants to give input to them of what the economic implications are, what that
Yeah.
You know, that's kind of a nice statement to be made. It's like warm and fuzzy, but
Yep.
the details evade me.
Yeah, well, and I don't I don't think the details are there yet. It's still at a broad level, but it's recognizing the issue. And this once again is from High Country Conservation, so it's for the whole countywide plan. So the idea is as we make decisions in that, that we're keeping those type of things in mind. So I think that's still to come, but it's a recognition that those are real issues and can affect folks in the community.
Council standpoint, would the town council feel bound to be in lockstep with whatever the the county decides to do? How does that work?
This is a countywide plan, so it would be agreed on by all parties. Yeah, in order to adopt it.
What I'm hearing you say is that the county would would decide and Breckenridge would follow. Is that correct?
Uh no, it uh each each municipality would have a vote as well as a county. Who's ever
The event that there was conflict between those two, how would that work?
Well, if if there's enough conflict, it may just not end up in the plan. I'll tell you where that proposal is.
It's also an advisory document. It's not an actual like it's something to keep in mind as we're drafting other codes um as an advisory document, but it's not code like our handbook of design standards or a development code where you absolutely have to adhere to it. It's it's one of many advisory documents that we I guess help form our policy um for the town.
Excuse my lack of understanding, but I just wanted to help you to understand what you're what you're really speaking or what they are really speaking of.
Yeah, I mean, it 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 it's a it's a great question because I think a lot of people don't understand the layers, so it's a good opportunity to explain.
I think the one example, um a good example for us is with Alta Verde one. With the net zero project going in, um basically to a large extent, those utility bills are gonna be absolutely minimal. I think there's a base charge that Excel has, which last I heard was like twelve dollars a month or something like that. And um a lot of those units should probably be close to that base charge. So they're gonna be um, you know, lower income groups in living in Breckenridge, they're gonna be seeing um utility savings for years because of that. So
Thinking of Alta Verde.
Alta Verde, exactly. So and I had um I talked with um Gorman and they were able to provide an analysis that the money we put into the solar and the net zero systems, those savings in utilities will in twenty years be paid back. Won't be paid back to the town, but it'll be a payback to the occupants.
To the occupants or to the developer? Because the occupants aren't paying the utility bills.
Right.
Part of their rent, correct?
Yeah, that's all built into their rent. So they're they're able to control their rent more.
But understood, but the savings is really going to Gorman.
Yes. But that but it gets ends up getting passed on end of the day through the
Understood. I'm just asking for clarification.
Yep. Yeah.
Okay, so thank you.
Yep. Um the next item, um they also got a presentation from BTO. They put um every couple of years, said RRC, I believe, does a uh resident sentiment survey to see um, you know, people feeling about the town and what are the issues and not surprisingly, the two two negative issues that came up once again, which have in previous are housing availability, affordability, and then perceived overcrowding at times of year. Um and um there still was um solid support for the quality of life here. Um there's not a, you know, sense that that's diminishing. Um those are like real high level findings from that. Um it's not very different than from previous years when they done this survey. I think they do it every other year. But uh anyway, uh so that's just something and they're gonna drill down on a few issues, I guess, that council had questions of, but I I frankly forget what they are. But anyway, it's something they do regularly.
And eventually that study will be published once they kind of drill down some of those. So I guess if you're interested in it or once that will maybe let you know when that's available, if you want to take a look at it.
There was a um, thanks for that, Chris, um discussion about um they're doing a an evaluation um of Carter Park in terms of redoing the dog park area. And um it's really, a lot of it's about drainage and improving that out there. And uh so Norris Design has come up with some really some good ideas, maybe creating islands that are kind of like drainage swales with some landscaping. So it's not just one giant area that dogs just have a free run in. Um and then uh there's um they're also looking at different material, probably not having the grass or dirt, but um a peat gravel and sand mixed material that's been used in some others and apparently is pretty successful. You know, there's obviously maintenance with these things, but um so anyway, that's something they're working on right now and I'm not sure if the implementation's gonna be this summer or not, but I'm kind of guessing it is, so I can't remember that. Um yeah, uh um there wasn't a lot of items on there. For the first time in a few months, it seems like we didn't have a BGB discussion. So anyway, and uh but we'll be coming back um next week, hot and heavy with actually the first it's a work session on the development agreement. We actually have the language that's proposed now. Chris has been working like crazy on this over the last several weeks um to um you know, respond to BGB. They finally, their attorneys finally provided that language. And um we we're getting to the finish line where that'll be going in the packet on Thursday. And um next Tuesday, we'll have that discussion on all the deal points associated with that. If that goes well, we would move on to a first reading, the first hearing on the ordinance on the development agreement on February twenty-seventh. So that's the schedule, subject to change.
So my question to you is um this is a huge project and the development agreement, I'm assuming, is extensive. So we of this panel would appreciate as much additional time as you can give us. And we've had this discussion before. I think if you dump this on a lap in our lap on Friday, it's gonna be very difficult to us for us to evaluate it by Tuesday.
Do you? Okay, you 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 you, this isn't going to you for approval. It's going, yeah.
Work sessions.
A work session, we need to have some understanding.
It's a work session for the council.
The work session for the town council.
Work session for the council.
Yeah, um it's it's it will be available probably starting Thursday afternoon on the website. So you guys can look at that. Your your guys' hard work starts after the development agreement's done. Because then the very next things that are gonna happen is more than likely is they will come in to amend both master plans, the one for the gondola lots and the one for Peak seven and eight.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood you. I thought you were going to let us see this, give comments that would then go to the council.
Yeah, yep.
So
Yeah, but you're
You can have sympathy though for the council because they'll get it on Thursday and and have to have comments on uh on Tuesday.
Yeah.
Although they they do have a little bit of
They do have the advantage of having had all these discussions.
Of having eleven
We haven't seen.
Yeah, eleven work sessions.
Uh I'm just gonna give you a forewarning. I mean, there's gonna be some things that are gonna come to you and we're gonna be telling you it's in the development agreement. You know, and 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 this has happened before with the planning commission. Planning commission is like we're in a tough position here because we don't necessarily agree with that. Well, the development agreement set is basically acts as the zoning, so to speak, and it it overrides the zoning and provides waivers. And so when we come to you and present that, you'll just need to understand that there's certain things that have already been agreed to. Um and Chris and I have been careful to try to outline what those are and what we still think you guys absolutely need to weigh in on. Um so um you're still gonna have an opportunity to help shape the final product, but there are gonna be some things that are already determined.
I understand that and I'm just trying to get up to speed after three years here of understanding how you all do things because um you know, where I come from, the town councils would solicit some opinions before they make a final decisions from the planning commission. So it's a little bit different than what I'm used to, so that's why I'm asking.
We they do that sometimes. So for example, with the Entrada annexation, remember several years ago? The we brought that to you guys for what we called a a fit test, real rough fit test. So that's where the plant, the council did say, yes, bring it to planning commission and then come back. Um on this, that just wasn't part of the deal. Um but you but you get to look at it more in more detail at each site.
In 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 some ways, the most significant portions of this development agreement did kind of have a fit test because for parcel four, which is the admin site of the base of Peak Eight, the building is essentially the same at the end of the day um as the is the previous Lionheart proposal, which both had a fit test and also was previously approved um by the planning commission. So that kind of that's the really the biggest, tightest site. The duplex sites on or on um parcel three on South Gold Rush, that was really kind of the same as what was proposed in the previous um gondola lots um site specific proposals. So that one's kind of had a look at. Mark mentioned Entrada. Um really what's left is just the single family home sites that they're proposing at the end, the tim- timber trail between there and um the maintenance building and then the two off And then the two off of Four O'Clock Run Road, because the other two parcels are almost entirely surface parking as they are today. With the exception of a limited number of employee housing on the North Gold Rush. So I I think that's that weighed into their decision on whether there should be fit tests. For some of these parcels when they were looking at it early on.
Understood. I I'm asking the question because where I come from and I experienced, things were done differently and. Things would not have been treated as an entitlement for that parcel four because you have a different party here. That agreement expired and that new party would have to start from square one. Is what my experience is, so I'm a little bit surprised by the treatment of that as an entitlement in this particular question.
Yeah, and and and. Maybe it's a little bit more confusing. It's not an entitlement. It's basically setting the parameters.
I understand.
Potentially have that where you still have to go through a master plan.
It's as though it's an entitlement.
And go through and and go through a site specific review.
Yeah, and if you guys have any questions as you're following this, feel free to reach out to us because we want to keep you up to speed too. I mean, we're not gonna spend two hours at each meeting. But we probably when we move on beyond this, it'd probably be good to get you guys a little bit up to speed on the specific conditions. Knowing that there's master plans coming in shortly thereafter.
Your recommendation for us, if we really wanted to dig into this, is to go to the website, take a look at.
Yes.
Is being proposed and.
Yeah.
And then approved by the council.
And feel free to call us if you have questions.
Thank you.
It's gonna be this coming Thursday?
Next Tuesday.
Well, I mean, the.
Oh, the the packet, yes, yes. Packet will be out probably Thursday afternoon.
And we'll find that we're on the website.
It's on the.
I can show you all, actually.
Oh, great.
I forgot that I was in front of a computer. Okay, so.
Cliff Cross Two Planner.
Update that picture.
So up here. Your government. And we're gonna hop all the way across the screen to Town Council. Scrolling down a little bit. Right here will be showing the information for the meeting on Tuesday. In there, there will be a work session agenda and a work session packet. Yeah, so here's the previous meeting. So this is what it's going to look at. Would it be work session packet? Yeah, so you'd click on work session packet and it would bring up basically the 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 regular packet. From this area, you can download it to your computer and review it, make notes however you need to.
Thank you.
It is seven oh three and I adjourn the meeting.
They just the the LLC that Lionheart set up. Or the East Peak Gate. They just shut that down like Lionheart Capital to. They just, they just decided to give up on the bribe and sold it to BGB.
I'm not exactly sure.
So they just handed, like, they just basically, that investment, they decided to write.